Okay, take a quick here. And I knew it would be my blotter though. Then our house is super fun if I want. Well, when I left you, I had that blotter open. I didn't walk over there.
That's easy.
Well, yeah. Can we talk? Your last needs for.
So.
A lot of work. Or something.
Let's go to the order. Jill Minard.
Here.
Michelle Adam.
Yeah.
Lloyd Johnson.
Here.
Melissa Goodbody.
Here.
Ray Newman's here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And here we rally for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any open forum requests? Um, I have one change to the agenda. We'll move beyond the yellow ribbon from number 10 to number I, 5. Any other changes to the agenda? Are motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
And motion?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Okay, minutes for the council meeting. Are there any comments in reference to the consent agenda? You're not in motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Red County Sheriff's Department reports. Any discussion? You guys any questions? No, I appreciate the new report that Greg has added to the agenda. They put us in much better understanding of where we're at with that. And the daily list of the calls he did, the call for service is what's being reported now. So we're getting both reports. Not only the incident report, the phone log, but also the call for service. So that's very helpful. And thank you for being here. You're welcome. Any other discussion? City activities? Jill?
Um, I attended the EDA meeting back in January. I attended the park and rec party at the Rink also in January, followed by Big Go and Bags. I think both of those events were pretty good public events. Decent turnouts at each, bringing kind of different crowds. Um, and then I attended Park and Rec meeting, personnel meeting. That might have been it. Um, the Montrose Days mini meeting was postponed for the month of February. It should have fallen next Sunday, which is Valentine's Day. They were going to do it yesterday, which was the Super Bowl. So they just canceled that. Um, a couple of things coming up for them is the fish fries on February 26th and March 4th. Tickets are available, I believe, at City Hall. Maggie? Yes. Otherwise, we have your Montreal State Committee number two. That's about it. Not much else for me.
Michelle?
For January, I did Park and Rec, PAC meeting, council meetings, Skate Day event, the Bags event, tier meeting. January, or February, so pretty early, but we just did Park and Rec. That'll come up in later discussion. That's pretty much it for me.
Okay. Um, I attended Park and Rec meeting, volunteers meeting, several, Boy Scout meetings, EDA meeting, BMW meetings, Fire Department meetings, and Personnel Committee meetings.
All right. Well, I missed the last city council meeting, but I did attend the EDA meeting. We had the volunteer meeting. I also was at the produce drop. And then we also had our beyond the ribbon meeting, and then the pine ludi.
Lloyd?
Yeah. The regular council meetings, the special meetings, and the EDA meeting and Personnel Committee. And also there's WCAT Buffalo there. And they had a schedule except for hiring them. They just can't get enough drivers. Their new building there is going to be ready ahead of schedule, maybe by as early as April 1st. But they're just having a problem. They need about 11 people right now.
How many muscles do they have on out now? Do you know?
They got 19, but they want to have 29. That was about it.
Okay, moving on to administration and resolution for increase in local government aid.
Um, Mayor and Council, in front of you is a resolution in support of increasing local government aid in 2016 legislative session. Um, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities sent a letter that's included in your packet that asks cities in the state to pass a resolution that supports. They are going to go to the legislature to ask for an increase in local government aid. As you know, we do get local government aid each year to manage the city. Um, that would, they're asking to get more money dedicated for local government aid. Um, so that is the, they're going to ask for a $45.5 million increase. Um, and so the resolution in front of you is just outlining our support for that as they bring it to legislators this year.
Will we get the whole $45 million?
Some algorithms, though.
Discussion? My brother would be to see that go back to the taxpayers, however, that's probably going to happen. So I think this is probably a good move on our part. Um, do I have any motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-03 supporting the local government aid request.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Data Practices Amendment.
Okay, um, Mayor and Council, I am just bringing this to you today just to make a couple of changes. Primarily just to update it with my name. And to take out just that sentence that says the city does not have a city park treasurer, as you can see in the packet. So that's all that would change.
Discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the update of the data practices policy dated February 8th, 2016.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries five vote. Can I get you, Michelle?
Nope.
Michelle?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries five vote. Okay. Department of Transportation, Trump 25 speed study results.
Mayor and Council, I just provided this letter, or we were, sent this letter from Minnesota Department of Transportation. We sent them a letter asking for them to review trunk highway 25 between 7th Street South and US trunk highway 12. Um, I think there was some safety concerns for pedestrians. Um, we asked in the letter that they would change the speed limit from 45 to 30 miles per hour based on the study that they conducted. They feel that, that they don't see that any change is necessary.
Um, not much we can do about that one, although I would like to keep that as an issue to move forward, that we continue to push for changes as we move for the course of development down there and put sidewalks down there. I think it's important that we have a speed limit that's appropriate to the pedestrian practice. They probably will with that. Yep. Okay. So let's keep that on the top of the agenda, that we can move that forward as it comes up again. 2015 budget amendments. Or 2016 budget.
Oh, did I? Um, Mayor and Council, um, this is the, in your packet is the 2015 budget amendments at the end of the year, or the beginning of the year. Each year, amendments are made to the budget. And so, um, to, in order to make those amendments, we need a resolution passed that supports that those amendments be made.
Discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-02, the budget amendments.
Second?
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
Motion carries five vote, 2016-02. Okay. Outdoor rec grant application, 2016-06.
Um, Mayor and Council, um, myself, city planner, Joe Faust, Public Works Director, Sean Terex, and Justin, our city engineer, Justin Connas. Um, we are all kind of looking into applying to the outdoor recreation grant. That's due at the end of March. It, um, what we would be applying for is to get money for a shelter with a bathroom in the Preserve of Montrose. It would be located on the southern end, kind of by where the proposed soccer fields are going to be. Would be a matching grant. And so we can apply for up to $100,000. And at this time, we would match it with the money that we put aside for the Preserve of Montrose. I think there's about, um, a little, I think it's 180-something thousand right now. Um, so we would take money out of that to match if we did get the grant, so.
Can we clarify that that's the regional park and not Preserves? Because Preserves is over Grand 12, and Regional Park is down here.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it is the regional park.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-06, going for the outdoor park and recreation project.
Second?
Second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Okay, I have Park and Rec next. Anything else? Our Public Works, sorry. Public Works, anything for your Public Works, Sean?
Nothing more than business as usual, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Emergency management? Kevin, do you want to step in? Anything on that?
Nope.
Okay. Personnel committee? Two sets of minutes? Jill?
Sure. So we had two different Personnel Committee meetings in the month of January. The first one, um, several different items were discussed, ranging from a pretty, a pretty in-depth discussion on vacation leave and sick leave in our current personnel policy and determining where we want to go from, where we want to go now in the future. Um, there was discussion on wage ranges and increases and how we go about those in the future with a more clarified process in getting there. Also adding on the fire department wage range and increases. Also, um, there was brief discussion held on the new building proposition. Um, and then just a brief, again, note on the legal team change with Mike McCain leaving Vetberg and Lammer's firm. And we adjourned that meeting at 5:36. The second meeting that we had, um, was February 1st. And that one was again to continue reviewing the current personnel policy that's in place. Um, we had a draft with all of the changes that were from the January meeting, found a few more changes that needed to be made. Um, we are going to see if we can get a survey out to the residents about having the office hours changed to better suit the needs of the community. I'm not sure where that's at, but that's in discussion. Wage ranges and increases were discussed again as far as getting that into the personnel policy. And then in other business, we had the alternative urban area wide review, which that meeting is held, will be held on February 22nd at 4:30 with council to review that detailed information. Um, and then there was more discussion on the well and well house study that took place. Along with emergency management?
Any discussion? Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Committee minutes from January 11th to February 1st.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council included, your packet are a copy of the minutes from the January 20th Planning Commission meeting. Unless you have questions related to it, they are in for your information.
Motion to approve. Are there any discussion? Melissa, approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 20th Planning Commission minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
Oh, aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. And then we do to conditional use permit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and public, we have a request before you for a conditional use permit for the use of 271 Center Avenue South. This is the building that one time was a video store. It's on the northwest corner, north of Casey's. The request comes from the House of Grace Lutheran Church. The owner of the facility, Dean Fix, has signed the application, approval of the application. They are looking for a conditional use permit to have specialty school, which will be parenting classes and tutorial sessions for students. Um, they also plan to have some of their church offices, which is a permitted use in that district. This is in the B1 central business district. The two conditional use requests are before you tonight. One is for the use of it for school. And the seventh is for off-site parking. If you're familiar with that site, there are some parking spaces on the left or on the west side of the building, but they are for the residents that are on the seventh floor. Um, in the past, that site has utilized onsite parking. Based on the use and size of facility, it would require five parking spaces. The church is requesting permission to have offsite utilizing either the parking lot here or at City Hall. Since it is over 500 feet from the site, a variance would be also requested for the requirement to have shuttle service to the site. And if they did have large events, they indicated that they would provide shuttle service, but day-to-day services where they have low numbers, they would not anticipate having a deal with service for shuttle. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this on January 20th. There were a number of individuals that present at the hearing, and a number of them spoke in support of the request. The only concerns that we heard were to ensure that if there were individuals utilizing the services at that location, that they not block private driveways or entrances. And they intended to indicate that they would share that with their staff and with those that are attending the site to make sure that that's respected. With that, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the application and the conditional use permits and the variance. There is a application form in your packet, as well as a resolution through consideration. And that resolution lands the conditions that they notify their patrons of using the off-site parking and not blocking spaces. And also that they have an agreement with the property owner for off-site parking for their minimum five vehicles. And so I would anticipate that would probably be the city, and they have a public parking lot. So I'm not sure if we need a lease agreement, or attorney could advise us on that, or if you're thoughtful with adopting this resolution. In essence, you'd be apprising, you know, they have five cars parked here, aren't they? We suggest if needed.
Any comments from the community or the advocate?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Pastor Kimberly Buffy, and I am the applicant of the CUP and the variance on this property. This property will be used as, from the church, House of Grace Lutheran Church, as a ministry center. And so it will be used for the public to serve in the capacity of being a place for homework helps, might be a place for like emergency food. Uh, it also could be for parenting classes, as she has said, and some other resources that are going to be available to the community. Combining things that are used through our agencies, our local agencies, as well as some of our religious agencies to come together and serve our community. And so I ask your approval for the CUP and the variance that's going to prove. I have the approval of the planning and zoning approval of this. And I'm available for questions.
Are you going to have regular hours?
We hope to have regular hours. Yes, we will.
And it won't start out that?
Well, I don't know how regular they'll start out, but certainly a couple of days a week that we will be in that space because we'll be using it as office space as well. And so there will be some standard hours, and then we will grow from there depending on the, where we go with it. So I'd like to see some after-school program, programming that happens out of that space. So then it will happen after school, fair to say. But the exact hours have not been established for that as of yet.
Any other questions? Thanks Pastor Kimberly.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments from the community?
Hi, sorry. Mayor, Council members, I'm Courtney Whitten, the Chair of Planning and Zoning. When we looked at this matter at our last meeting, as a whole, we thought it would be a good idea, a good use of that space. To my knowledge, we don't have anything that kind of brings the community together that way. So we thought it would be a good use of space there. Um, the parking, again, our only issue was that they not blocked private citizens' driveways, and that's been addressed as one of the conditions. Um, as far as parking in the public lots, we already have churches already, or parishioners parking in other public lots around the area. So I guess to me, that was kind of a non-issue. And as far as, I personally saw it anyway, it's kind of a fluid issue because it's in kind of its infancy right now. But, you know, being a typical Minnesota, I have high expectations and just, you know, little aspirations at this point until it gets rolling. So, um, hopefully you guys go through it without a too great idea. Thought it was a good use of space, currently sitting empty. Thanks.
Any other comments from the community? Discussion? Motion to approve, 2016-04?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-04, the conditional use permit at 371 Center Avenue.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
As a member of House of Grace, I will abstain. Motion carries four vote. Motion carries four vote. Thank you very much for attendance, everyone from House of Grace, and good luck on the project. I hope everything goes gangbusters.
We will keep you informed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, according to our economic development and zoning bylaws, on an annual basis, the EDA is providing the City Council with recorded activities, including our funds and activities completed. The goals in your packet are part of review, and as approved by the EDA at the last meeting, is a copy of our 2015 report, which is to highlight a couple of the main events. The EDA did receive two grants last year, one for $2,500 from the Asian Foundation to assist with consulting costs, and a second for $1,832.50 from Mendocino Cooperative Landscape Grant. Highway 12 Redevelopment Committee was active and completed another phase of landscaping. We conducted the ribbon cutting for Dollar General. In overall, the Department of Employment and Economic Development reports increases in the number of jobs, wages, and businesses in the community for the calendar year. City continues that the EDA has marked the Preserve of Montrose property that the city owns. Manufacturers Week was celebrated, and our industries recognized. We did some updating of the parking. And to summarize, our financials for the EDA came in under budget for 2015. There will be questions that we have to respond to.
Questions, comments? Any other motion to approve that?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the annual report from the EDA?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015 annual EDA report.
I'll second that. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote to approve and accept the EDA annual report. Moving on to 2016-05 wastewater treatment facility annexation.
Mayor and council, I found you the resolution to approve the annexation, excuse me, of land into the city of Montrose. So the land that is currently our wastewater facility, a portion of it is currently in the town of Woodland. And so this motion would approve that annexation into the city of Montrose. At the city of Wood, or the township of, town of Woodland, they are also bringing this to their, their meeting tonight to approve that we would annex the land into our city as well. So we need approval from both sides.
Motion to approve 2016-05.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-05, approving the annexation of land into the city of Montrose from the town of Woodland.
Second, all sorts. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. It's moved to council member ability to serve as a voting member of Park and Rec Commission.
I can't tell who's looking at me.
I don't know.
That's Pat.
Okay, well, I can give up.
I'm prepared to discuss that, but it's something that's changed since.
Okay.
So in front of you is, I think, at the previous Park and Rec meeting, a com, I think a member or council member asked if they, for the ability to serve as voting member of the Park and Rec Commission. I spoke with city attorney Andy Pratt today, and he recommended that, that this not happen. It's just a recommendation, though he just said his concern was that there be a conflict of interest just because the Park and Rec Board serves to make recommendations to the council. I don't know if there's any more discussion on that, or if you want to give greater detail.
That's what I haven't filled in on. I think, I think that's accurate. Essentially, members of the council, what it comes down to is there's not any technical legal piece you can point to that would say this is something that the council shouldn't do, but the problem is, is, as a city clerk laid out, is essentially that we've got a member of the City Council now on two voting bodies, one which reports to the other. That, that is kind of too ripe for, too ripe for potential conflicts that a city attorney would prefer. So I don't think there's a huge legal issue as far as technical rules, but it just, it's going to raise the potential for conflict in the future. That was the sum of Amy's memory.
Discussion?
My only thought is, what's the difference with the Personnel Committee? Because theoretically, that's the same thing, right? I mean, you've got three members of the council on the Personnel Committee.
We don't, we don't voter approve anything.
Nor does Park and Rec. Park and Rec simply makes recommendations.
Some recommendations to the council. It is not a voting process.
And certainly, I think the idea with personnel is, and obviously, we can look at the deeper detail on this, but there's a little bit more of the infrastructure government going on with the Personnel Committee piece. But I think the point is well taken, it's something worth looking into.
My point is, with Personnel Committee, the council serves as a management for the senior members of the employees, and therefore, it's appropriate that they sit on that committee as well, even though they have no, you know, voting authority there to make the policy, because that all still comes back to that. Where is the Park and Rec and the Planning and Zoning operate somewhat more autonomously as committees in their own right? And I think that there would be considered more of a conflict of interest on those two committees than would be considered on the Personnel Committee.
Isn't this why we had this discussion over the summer? Yeah, we had this discussion. I'm not sure why it's brought up again. We already know that the council member can't vote, so I'm not going around.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion regardless of this?
Do we need a motion for it?
You would require a motion, isn't this part of the ordinance as well?
There is an ordinance. So.
Yep.
If the council would choose to allow that, there would need to be a change to the ordinance.
There is a change later on, but that's for non-residents. Right.
But it wouldn't require a change to the ordinance to have council members be a voting member of the committee.
But I think, right, we're not changing. Our general discussion here is that we're not going to change it.
We should go to the discussion over the summer, and we won't change it.
There's no need to change anything and just stay the same as it is. The council representation would be as a liaison from the council. Move on to Park and Rec minutes.
We had called our meeting to order at 5:34 on February 1st. Discussion was held for approval of the agenda, because we don't have enough members. Approval of the December minutes was discussed, and it was regarding the January 4th meeting minutes as written. We looked at the Capitol Improvement Plan. Discussion was held regarding the Capitol Improvement Plan. The archery practice range was discussed regarding the archery range. Skate Day was discussed. Held regarding the recap of the event from the Skate Day Winter Event. It was very good. Easter egg hunt discussion, where it will be in conjunction with the Methodist Church. Regional Park modular building discussion was held regarding the potential building plan for the regional park. Commission pay was discussed, and the commissioner, commission discussion was to keep the commission pay intact. Resignation of member Young was discussed. So we're just asking that the council accept her resignation as well, Young. And the reappointment commission member of Sylvia Henry was discussed for reappointment. Appointment of Kirby Moynah was discussed, the potential appointment of Kirby to the Park and Rec Commission. Meeting policy, procedures, bylaws, city ordinances, Chapter 23.02. Discussion was held regarding the meeting policy and bylaws and the city ordinance chapter. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:00.
Sylvia, what was your recommendation reference, reverence the appointment of Kirby Moynah?
We have recommended.
We can't recommend, council?
We can.
Can we go ahead without the recommendation? You can.
Yes.
Well, we need the members, so there's no question why we shouldn't put them on.
Same way with reappointment meeting, you're going to go down.
Motion to approve the minutes, or discussion if there is any?
Okay. I have a little bit of discussion.
Okay.
The Easter egg hunt? We, I am in discussion with that, with the Methodist Church. They're going to get back to whether or not they, we will be hearing up with them. At the volunteer meeting, it was discussed that they do continue to do the Easter egg hunt, but in actuality, they don't do the Easter egg hunt. They just do it for their church, not as a community, because it got to be too large. So that's why we're looking at carrying up the vote to go back into a community event. Meeting policies and procedures were also in discussion. So I'm going to kind of bring that up a little bit, because I need council's guidance on this. This was brought up in regards to a member that comes and participates in the discussions, doesn't have any voting right, we already know that, and we know the commission can vote, which we don't have a commission, so they can't vote, so therefore, it's all recommendation. But one of our commissioners was upset that we have a continuing. Resident? Resident that comes and gives input on events or anything that we have coming up. So as Lloyd said, we have a problem getting people coming in, so I'm, I'm kind of asking the council, is it an issue to have Jill, sorry, attend our meetings? There, there's no voting being done, there's, she's just a, a person that comes, gives a little input, can't vote, can't recommend anything, and, but we have a commissioner who is upset by that, saying that that's kind of not appropriate.
We also have Thomas that comes.
Thomas comes as well, who is not a commission, but we take his input, you know, I mean, to, as a liaison for Park and Rec, to me, it's just, you know what, everybody come on in, give us your input, you know, we're taking any ideas you have. We can't, you know, we have a problem getting full voting, because we don't, you know, we had Janelle, but she's left due to personal reasons. So I don't see the big deal, so I'm just kind of asking your opinions, if it is just an opinion or suggestion.
Certainly, the committees are open to the public and should be. The only concern that I have is if we have irregularity of council members attending, and we have a quorum, then the meetings do need to be posted, so we're consistent with the open meeting law. And that may be something that we need to do, because we have several council members who are members of other organizations within the community, volunteer organizations within the community, and have a vested interest in attending the Park and Rec Committee meetings as well, but may feel that they're precluded because of their status as council members, and the meeting is not posted. So that may be something that we would look at, making sure that we post that meeting to be consistent with the open meeting law. The council members would not be voting members, and therefore, would not conflict, create a conflict of interest as far as bringing something as a pre-supposed vote to the council.
We would like to know if we're going to have a third council person at our meetings, because then for sure, they're posted.
Maggie, I would suggest that we post those meetings, and that way, our, our council members won't work, be inhibited to attend, because I know that we have four council members who work with volunteer organizations as well right now, and would like to attend those, and they attend the volunteer meetings on a regular basis.
We do have volunteer meetings posted.
Yep.
Right, so. Because I think all of us attend that.
No big deal to post the meeting. It's not like we're going to pay commission, because we don't, we don't get a flat pay. The only concern that I have is if there are any changes to the meeting, that they be given to Maggie well in advance, so that we have a three-day requirement event for posting of the meeting.
What changes are you?
If there are any.
Like?
Like a holiday, something like that.
Oh.
Anything that goes on the agenda needs to be.
Everything goes to Sean.
Yeah.
So.
Any other comments? So are we going to make a motion to put mine to hand?
So we need to do the minutes first, I think. Did we do the minutes yet?
No, we haven't, no.
Okay. Any more discussion on the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes, Park and Rec?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 1st 2016 Park and Rec meeting minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote to approve the minutes. Now we can move on to the appointments.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Sylvia Henry to the Park and Rec Commission.
I have a point of order on that in the motion, or in the letter that we have. It says to, take my help, as chair, and it would strike the as chair. That needs to be a voted committee as opposed to the council.
We can't really vote on that yet, because we don't have a full council.
We just need Sylvia chair until we can give it.
Until there's another vote, then the sitting chair will stay in place.
No, that's not how it works.
No?
No.
The vice chair serves as a chair until new chair is appointed.
New chair is appointed, okay, then we're having it sit that way, and it works, that the ordinance?
Who's the vice chair? Bruce Lu.
Okay.
Bruce Lu?
So the next count, the next March meeting, when, if it is approved to have Kirby, then we would take voting?
That's if the commission wants to do that, yes.
So at the March meeting, we'll take that. Okay, thank you.
So then we don't have.
So then we just need to have a motion to appoint Sylvia Henry back on the Park and Rec?
Yes.
I'll second that. Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion is made, seconded, I vote, yes. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five votes. Let's move to point of Kirby Moynah. Discussion?
We actually have quite a bit of discussion on this with Kirby. So we just kind of let him know that this is a, a big commitment because the last six months or so, Park and Rec has done a lot of work, put in a lot of hours. So we just had to make sure that he has the time available and that he is very committed in this, and he assures us that he is. So I will make a motion then to appoint Kirby to Park and Rec Commission.
Okay, was there any other discussion? Okay, motion is made, second?
I'll second that.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries five votes to appoint Kirby to the Park and Rec. Thank you, Sylvia. We'll now go to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon.
You skip one.
Okay, I skipped one.
Permission for council member Otto to advertise the Park and Rec.
Oh, sorry. Hold up.
On social media.
Okay. Permission to advertise on social media. Did everyone see the email and references that came from Andy?
I did. My computer crashed and I didn't have any copies. Essentially, he just, he was concerned that any items that still need to come in front of the council, it shouldn't, shouldn't be on social media until, until the issue is, is done with the council. Also, I think he was concerned because not everybody has, is followed, probably follows specific council members and so it wouldn't reach everybody. I think one of his recommendations is that we actually look into a social media policy that I think is for city employees as well as governing board members. So that it would kind of make clear kind of that these kind of situations and when social media is allowed and I agree. But I think the main concern was that if there was advertisement, it wouldn't, it wouldn't reach everybody and I think that's our goal is to reach, be fair to everybody and to reach everybody, so.
Discussion?
So since I just, I'm not really, I just got this. So basically, it goes out into the, it goes on the city webpage. It goes in the newsletters. So we can't put it on like Community of Montrose or Nextdoor, hey, we're looking for Park and Rec committees and zoning commissions?
I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like I was just kind of informed of, of this situation and so I just kind of spoke with Andy briefly about this. I, I think he has a good point. I think we should probably look into a social media policy just so everybody has a clear understanding what and, I mean, it is kind of a city issue, or a city advertisement. So I just think we should be clear, like where we're posting stuff and who's posting it just because it is, it is, I mean, we're the ones that are going, like administrative wise, we're the ones that are getting the applications and questions and phone calls.
And I think there's two concerns. One is access and whether or not the site has access to the entire public. And the second piece of it, who controls that site and does the city have control of the data that is on there? Because once it becomes a city posting, then that data becomes subject to the open meeting law. And as such, the city needs to have control of that data. And that is not the case on any of the social media that I've seen that has, you know, even the city of Montrose, we're not the administrator there.
If I may, I understand your question, council member Otto, and I think Mayor summarized it well. It does come down to access and when it's on the main formal page for the city of Montrose, that's a formal way to communicate, whereas with Facebook, you know, I don't think the suggestion was anything was improper, just the idea that not everyone does have Facebook, not everyone does have those, those immediate electronic, I guess, presence or access to the presence. And certainly in right coming, I think that's not, unfortunately, that's not even in 2016 an unusual problem, but not everyone has that same access. So that's essentially what, what Andy's concern was.
Okay. I understand that he's so, but the way we're doing it now is not working. So, because we're not getting any interest, you know, so we do want to figure out some way to get it out there more than just the newsletter. And that's basically all we're using right now.
Right, because who thinks to check the Facebook?
Nobody's listening.
Who thinks to check the website if there's not a precursor somewhere that says, hey, check the website, we're hiring, or we're, you know, looking for members?
And I, I think we can even expand our own city Facebook too and, and maybe advertise on there as well, so.
Because I know a lot of the times with our city webpage, people don't use it because it's not user friendly. That's the one thing I hear, it's you can't really go into it and get to the links that you need to get to. So, you know, not many people really, and in the community of Montrose, which is one of the websites, here, there's over 600 people on that site, so.
Jill, what are your thoughts on private comments that are made in reference to that as long as they're not official city comments on social media?
Private comments as far as?
For instance, that, that the Park and Rec Committee is looking for members from a private person.
Well, and that's going to get into the, if someone doing that as a good citizen deciding they're going to read a posting from the website and post it on their own, I don't think there's any, unless it's not official action, if it's somebody who's, who's an elected member, I don't think that's necessarily an issue that we should be concerned about. But then it gets into how often is that going to happen to the city? I think council, council member Otto's point is if there's a way we can improve it while still maintain control of the message that's getting out, which I think is the goal, that's probably something that can be looked into with perhaps an ordinance piece or a social media policy. But I think that's probably not as efficient as you might like to have, hope that someone's going to pick it up on Facebook and decide to forward that on.
Is it a, I mean, is this a group that anybody can?
Well, like currently now, it's a closed group, so only, there's like 500 members into, in it right now, in the one. I know that Anna, you've seen that one, Community of Montrose?
Closed.
No.
You haven't seen it anywhere?
No.
I think anybody can request to join though.
Right, they have to be approved to join it, yeah. And then before any postings go out, it has to be approved by their admin. So that's just the current policy that they just implemented within the last two days. So, but you know, as you can clearly see, it's been an issue for us on Park and Rec to get people out there and planning zoning is even short on their aspect and we're just, we're not getting the word out there. You know, we get a newsletter that goes out quarterly, how many people read it compared to, I mean, we read it, you know, because we help put it together or whatever, but we, we have to find a solution as to how to get that, get it out more.
And I, I mean, I think I can, I know I'm new, but I, I think I have some ideas and I think I can work with Anna and we can maybe put something on our own Facebook page as well. I think that's a good tool that we need to use more often. I think the new format for the newsletter will hopefully help. I mean, I don't know, it's too soon to tell because we haven't done it yet, but I mean, hopefully.
I know, I was just reading the Delano paper and on the front page of their paper, it said, it had just right at the bottom of the page, you know, planning and zoning in Park and Rec is looking for commissioners, contact city hall, or you know, whatever. I mean, and that's in the paper, so. Dumb.
I read it every time. Every time it comes up, it's in there. It seems like you could move to a big, better place.
So I can.
Does the city have a web, have a Facebook page?
We do.
Can't we share, individually share that information to our?
As soon as the city posts something, we can share it on our own, yeah?
Right, so if the city posts that need, can't we share that with people we know?
It wouldn't.
Or is that a problem?
I, I think it's, I don't think it's a problem. I think it still comes down to the access piece, but that is certainly a much, you still control the message, so to speak.
The other thing Maggie too is on our website, it might be good to have a newsreel piece on it, what's, what's happening, what's hot, you know? I know there are several websites that have that for organizations where they have a scrolling, you know, news piece on their website that is for current activities, events to add to, to alert people to those things.
Okay.
And then that would be able to tie back into our calendar or, you know, happenings page. Any further discussion? Now, Ben, starting to give you away.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor and Council for allowing us to speak here tonight. Just giving you a few updates here. Over the past year, we've drawn, changed quite a bit with adding the Montrose Beyond the Yellow Ribbon to our community, which has been a great thing. We've started reaching out to our local active and inactive service members. Just before Thanksgiving, we gave away gift baskets to them, just saying, you know, hey, thank you. Sent out, sent out cards to them for Thanksgiving, Christmas. Christmas time, we also gave out gift baskets of cookies, invited, we've invited them up here to the community center for coffee and refreshments to sit around and talk. It's been very well taken, heard lots of compliments, you know, from the service members saying thank you to us as a community for doing something for them and showing our support both to the active and, and inactive members. It's just, it's just been great. They've, they've stopped us out on the street and said, thank you. It's been greatly appreciated. I'd also like to let you guys know that on April 23rd, we have our second annual United for Heroes 5K. Starting 7:30 to 8:30 registration, we're doing it at Jackie B's again. We have changed up our race course a little bit this year. Thank you to Lori. We are actually, instead of just going up and down under a 12, we're actually going to go through all the community and we're asking, you know, the community members that if, if you see the, the race course and you're on it, you know, come outside, support us, you know, do whatever, decorate your front lawns, turn your lights on, you know, whatever. We just want you guys to know that we're out here supporting our military families and we want to get the word out there that we're, we're here to help and do what we can. So I do have flyers, if anyone likes flyers, come see me afterwards, so. Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon group is one of the most active, if not the most active group in the area, so we appreciate that, as a veteran, I appreciate it. Shaun, also with the Light of the Night race, that one is going to involve a lot more intersections. And I know that fire department is concerned about being able to staff all those intersections, so we may need to do some barricading in support of that. I gotta come talk to you, Shaun.
Yes.
It's on my list of items to do, but I'm a little behind right now. Just as a heads up.
As long as it doesn't the night before. I was going to call you, Dale.
Hey, by the way, right?
First, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
We are in the process of actually meeting with, I'm in the process of meeting with the Delano Legion and Howard Lake Legion to incorporate their veterans into our group because they don't have at this point. So if anybody knows, if any veterans in, you know, Howard Lake, Waverly or Delano, certainly let one of us know so that we can kind of incorporate them in. We're just trying to get everybody together. We are planning hopefully a spring meeting with, in partnership with the BMW and Zilery for the veterans with pickings and stuff, so. Anybody has any veterans that we don't know, please let us know, we'll reach out to them. We have like 35 on our list, so. Any ideas you have?
I would touch base with the Legion as well as the VFW and request their mailing list.
We, we can't, we can't.
Okay, but they can do that for you.
Right, they can, they can, like, we went to the VFW meeting and they, they wrote their names and addresses out for us, but they can't actually give us their name because it's protected property, protected information. So that's why I need to go meet with the Legions to be able to go to their meetings to get their members to actually give me their names and phone numbers.
But they can put that information in their newsletter. I know they send them in the folder as well.
And so, yeah, if anybody has any members who are out in that area, certainly let us know so we can reach out to them to include them in all of the stuff so that we can try and make an area thing to help them out too.
And we've once again requested the Marine Corps Color Guard come out again. Our request has been made. I don't want to hear back from them, whether it's coming out. Last year they came, and if, I don't know whoever hasn't seen it, but it's just pretty cool to watch these four guys.
Some pressure.
In dress blues come out and, you know, do their thing. I know they did it today, controls it out here in pouring rain and those, those dress blues, but it was still amazing sightseeing.
The Marines are always pretty with the Navy.
The Marines are coming to run the race. I did speak to their commander.
Good, tell them I want to hear some clean cake.
You can make that request, I'm on.
I will, just give me the name.
I have his part.
Good.
One other thing with that too, that I know maybe some of us had noticed earlier, well, last year, we had partnered a vet with a new organization that helps veterans get service dogs free of charge. And he has been working with this group and training with his service dog and he actually had a trial run at his home with the dog over the weekend and it went really well and so hopefully he will be able to bring the dogs home soon. So if you know of anybody, the organization that we helped him with is new, but they're an amazing organization and they've done a lot of great work.
Karen Parker?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. And you're back at the first item, January Activity Report. I'd just like to make special mention of the acknowledgements down at the bottom to Waverly Cafe and Red's Cafe for providing hot chocolate when we're at the same structure wired, and also the Waverly and Delano Fire Departments for their mutual aid assistance of that same structure wired. And then the next item is a relief item, the Gatsby 6768. I hope you have some information on that item.
Yep. So I spoke with Wendy. So the Gatsby, which is the Government Accounting and Standards Board, requires a full, I'm not able to say, actuarial valuation to be completed by Relief Association, which affects their financial reporting and the city's financial reporting and the annual audits. And since the Relief Association has changed over the state, over to the state investments or para effect of 2016, I think it only needs to be done for 2015. Wendy, you got two quotes, one from Hildy Inc. to do this report, or this valuation for $2,100 and Van, I don't know how to say that. Anyone know how to say that? Iwarden?
Iwarden.
Iwarden for $2,500. She spoke with two, with both companies and she's recommending, or staff is recommending that we go with Hildy because it's a lower price, but they also work with our current auditors, Abdo Eichenmeyer, so they can, they can actually go to Abdo to help complete the reports. And the cost of the report, of the valuation would be shared between the Fire Relief and the city.
Okay, any discussion on the Gatsby 6768 audit? Motion to approve, or do we have a motion in reference to the two that were submitted? Do we have a motion in reference to the two that were submitted?
I'll make a motion to approve, to move forward with Hildy Inc. for $2,100 for the Gatsby 6768, Fire Department Actuarial Valuation Audit.
Second?
I'll second.
Can you just make it so it's as Fire Relief Actuarial?
Fire Relief Actuarial Valuation.
It's just the relief one then?
Correct. You can get an audit of the audit.
Audit of the, audit that was done for the Fire Relief so that we can transfer it to the state retirement fund. So that was the approval of the Hildy quote to do the Gatsby 6768 audit. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
I vote aye. Back to you, Michelle.
Aye.
And Lloyd?
Aye.
Nice gift for Lloyd, we're getting ready. Motion carries five oh. Go ahead Jill.
Uh, the next item is in regards to the Fire Department Point of Contact and Public Information Officer. I request that city and council members alike direct any questions, comments, concerns to me directly in regards to Fire Department business policies, guidelines, investigations, et cetera. I commonly will send out emails after we have a major call, just so you guys don't get blindsided by something that somebody's saying from the citizen. However, that information is the exact same information that I'm sending to a news media type person. So it's very limited information. It is not a full picture of everything. I do not release investigative reports. I do not release all minute little details. Over this last month, during one of the structure fires, we had a lot of issues come to play because information got put out that wasn't true information. I'm not sure of the source of that information, but had the source of that information directed them back to me, I could have stopped it and the end result would have been much easier for me to get to rather than having to wait two and a half weeks to complete my investigation. So it is my responsibility as fire chief to determine the cause and origin of every fire. And that's part of the investigation piece. And if I can't get cooperation with the citizen or the property owners, then it becomes very difficult for me to complete my investigation. So I'm just kind of as an information type piece, just direct everything back to me and I'll filter it down to somebody who can either answer the questions or I'll get the answers myself.
And it's important for us as representative city, from a liability standpoint, to make sure that those questions and inquiries get to the fire chief where we get one person that gives that information as correctly goes from it. So that we're sure of what the information is given out. And that is that one point of contact, that is the affairs officer, public affairs officer for fire issues.
Next item, I'm gonna kind of defer to Justin on it a little bit here, is a permission to create a building committee and to move forward with the feasibility study for remodel expansion of our fire department. This is the first step, probably what will be a lengthy process and it's something that's gonna happen overnight. However, we'd like to have this report in hand so that when time does come, we can get moving in the right direction.
I can just expand on the report a little bit. What we're proposing to do is team up with Brunton Architects. Brunton Architects is a architectural firm that we work with on a number of different projects. Corey Brunton, Corey and I came out and actually met with Kevin on site and just kind of reviewed, reviewed what Brunton's done in the past. And obviously Kevin's pretty familiar with the way we operate, but basically this is a study that will look at the space needs. It'll do a space needs analysis, you know, what are the existing conditions? How does the fire department operate? What are the needs? Based on that, so we're meeting with the fire department to determine that, verifying the site drawings to the actual conditions on site, verify that the site drawings are correct, looking at the codes and code analysis, then basically presenting two rough block diagram concepts to review with the fire department. Based on that, a direction will be made to go one way versus the other way. And then cost estimate or statement of probable cost is determined to basically put together a budgetary number for moving forward from that point. So really this is what you're maybe more used to is a preliminary engineering report, that first step in looking at a project to determine what the scope should be and what the costs would be. So, you know, it's a good, good process to go through. It kind of gets all the things laid out on the table as to what should be included in the project or what, you know, maybe what wishes are in the project. And from that, they can be scaled out to fit the project. Kind of a building process for the fire department and city council, kind of get together on the same page what the needs are and what the project should be. The post fee for the work is $7,400. That's for, for all this time in our time.
Do we have any questions?
So the fire department is looking to expand?
Yes.
Or remodel?
Yes.
Okay, because we brought this up probably two years ago with the regional park, where it, you know, excuse, something else. That way, there was no interest in that.
Correct.
You just want to keep it here simply, is that acceptable?
Yep. The fire department actually was never approached regarding satellite fire station. We learned about it when it was brought up. And the city can't afford to run two fire stations. We have to buy another engine, we have to equip more personnel with gear. Plus with where our station is right now, it's centrally located, we have firefighters on both sides of the fire, or off the railroad tracks. Yes, it's an issue if something happens on the railroad. However, it's going to be an issue even if our station's up there, if something happens on the railroad. So we're not looking at doing a satellite station, we're just looking at expanding our capabilities here at this station probably. Unless throughout the whole feasibility study has said, hey, it's gonna be cheaper and better for you just to build a room, which I had to go.
Ninety and Kevin, would this go onto the fire department budget? And if are the funds available in those budgets or would it be a different city budget lined out in?
It will come out of the city's capital improvement budget where we have building expenses that we've been paying away for several years because we paid off the loan to the station. So there's money, there's over $250,000 in that account right now, which is also used for apparatus and stuff like that, but there's plenty of money in that account to contribute to this, so.
Are there some grants to use to remember hire a person to get this enlarged or get something?
Station grants are a thing of the past, from my understanding, unless Jason knows, or unless Justin knows of any special ones that.
There's, grants have been pretty minimal for anything like that of that nature. It's more fire equipment that you guys have been successful in getting, but stations have been pretty minimal.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to, to do the feasibility study for the fire station.
I'll second that. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Five oh nine Lloyd?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh for the feasibility study for fire department remodel expansion.
Then just two quick other information items. The Relief Association Dinner, which was held last Saturday, we served 318 dinners and 54 kid dinners or child dinners, which is a record for us. We've never had that kind of turnout by far. We actually ran out of food and had to turn some people away, so we apologize for that. Hopefully that won't happen again. It's a good problem to have. And then the 2015 Firefighter of the Year Award went to Tom Markington. And then we also gave our awards for the 2015 top responders. So we recognize firefighters who responded over 60% of all 318 calls. Those people were Darren Orr, Brian Dazenby, Willie Bowerschmidt, and Mike Markington. So, and that's all that I have.
Any more from engineering?
I have nothing here, uh, Mayor.
Jill? We're on the old business commission page.
So at the previous city council meeting, the issue was brought up regarding commission pay, if that should stay in place or not. The council directed that it go back to the commissions for discussion. It went back to the planning commission. They decided to keep getting the monthly stipend. Park and Rec. Park and Rec decided as well to keep it. So I just wanted to provide that update at this meeting.
The understanding should require any action because that's already an ordinance, isn't it?
Correct.
No action, it stays the same. Any discussion? Attorney Thomas, if you'd like to go ahead and sit here.
Okay.
You can come in, you're one of the planning zone.
We had a pretty lengthy discussion about this at our last planning and zoning commission meeting. I won't say it got heated, but it was pretty passionate. One of the things that was brought up was, we aren't volunteers, you know, we were appointed by you guys to do our job. We fill out an application, just like a job, we go through an interview process, at least I did anyway. Twenty-five dollars a meeting, I mean, it was $700 for the year for our entire committee. I mean, that's pretty, that's a pinch compared to everything else that's the money that's being spent on other things in the city. So it's not, we don't want to sound greedy or that we deserve it, but it's something for doing, doing our job that's not volunteer. So I get paid less than the fire department. That's all. That was our discussion. So, thank you. Thanks.
So basically roughly last year, all the work that the commission does, of course, that they do a ton of work, and Park and Rec has died out and it's a large amount of work with their stuff that they've done. We've only paid out roughly $1,060. To me, that's pretty minimal for, for everything that they do. So I'm glad that they did choose to.
It's extremely nominal for the amount of money, and I agree.
And I just honestly did, I appreciate all the work that they do, pointing for us.
Okay. Ordinance line, non-residents to serve Park and Recreation Commission.
Okay, so at the previous council meeting, the council discussed having non-residents serve on the Park and Recreation Committee. It was decided that up to two members could be non-residents, but would have to be within the neighboring township. And so I am just bringing, or staff is just bringing back the ordinance change or that would be required to get the ordinance or the city code updated. And so that's in front of you today.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-02, how it's done and what's to serve on the park.
Do you guys see it says, says planning commission? You know, the, says planning commission, the ordinance?
Oh, yes.
Should be Park and Rec.
Oh, I'm sorry, I deleted the wrong one, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay, but it's just with the Park and Rec.
Just, I'm sorry, that's for Park and Rec.
And when we discuss that, it needs to be just Park and Rec. The planning commission makes decisions as for as the community at large and can have a tax implication as well, so therefore needs to be a resident.
I'll second the motion with the change.
Okay. Reference the ordinance 2016-02 as amended. Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
I'm kind of hesitant to give outsiders to spend taxpayers' money, but.
They're not spending taxpayers' money.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Local Board of Appeal?
Okay, so in front of you in your packet is a letter from Wright County. The letter has tentatively set for our 2016 local Board of Appeal and Equalization date as April 25th at 6 o'clock PM. I believe that that is, that that can be changed. And so at tonight's meeting, we need to set that date so we can properly notify the county of that date and time and residents as well. I'm good with that.
I'm good with that as well.
Sounds good to me.
Yep. Lloyd, with that data, it sounds like winter. On a request for proposal mixed on the waste recycling collection services?
Okay, so at the previous council meeting, the council approved going out for bid for residential refuse and recycling. So in front of you today is the RFP that will call out for contractors to bid.
I have one question on that. This last line, your responders are prohibited from contacting a representative of the city council regarding this response. Explain that.
Um, hold on.
Does that mean a council member can't be going out and doing his job to save money?
Members of the council, if I may, I think that's the fairly standard term in RFP to prohibit any appearance of impropriety, someone contacting during the solicitorial process to get in with the council.
Yeah, during interview process, I can agree with that, but before that, I don't really see that that's right. I don't remember that being in anything before.
Yeah, that came actually, I'm pretty sure, from the previous one that was done in 2013. But I think, if you agree, I think it's just they shouldn't contact the council because I think it needs to wait until all information is provided at once and it shouldn't, I think it's to not sway anybody's, I mean, I don't think anyone should have more information than anybody else.
And in response to the idea of council member reaching out to someone, I think that puts into an issue of, is the city preferring one or the other, giving the idea that another applicant is better than the other without following the procedures of the RFP process?
Yeah, but they still have to turn in a bid form anyway, the rules.
Excellent. That's right.
Because I run across this because I, you know, I realize that I'm starting to become different. And I would probably recommend that, hey, you can actually put a bid in. Because the more bids we get in, the lower bids, the better bids for passengers.
Yeah, we are putting it in, there is a schedule. We are going to be, we are putting it in several newspapers. So, I mean, we are doing, we are advertising this in several locations.
I would suggest that if there are things that you would like to have as invitees to the bid, that that comes from the city office as opposed to the council member. That way we avoid the impropriety issues. So the ones that we want to have included or notified of the bid process, I'd get that to ninety and a half percent of dollars, send them a notice, individually a pointed notice if they understand what's out there. I don't think that's against any of the issues as far as public notice of the open for bid.
And I think that's accurate. I would strongly recommend leaving the line. And I think that's accurate. I would strongly recommend leaving the line in just for the appearance of propriety throughout the process. And certainly, the idea with the RFP process is that the most economically feasible best bid for the city of Montrose, you can all that, that ends all.
Yep, and then, Manny, if you do handle those requests, we just send them what we have published anyway, and then it's the same thing to get, or just get that to appointed individual. Okay, upcoming meetings, Kevin, you want to talk about the HSEM Oil and Gas Substance Awareness Training?
Uh, council and city staff are welcome to come to that training. Should be a good training. That's all I really know right now.
It's gonna be here at committee's center?
Correct, yes.
Actually, can we step back a second and approve the RFP?
Pardon?
I don't think we approve the motion.
We gotta do that here. Motion to approve the, is there a motion to approve the solid, mixed and solid waste recycling services proposal?
I'll make a motion to approve the RFP for residential refuse recycling collection.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
No.
Uh, Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries four one. Okay, first up, committee meeting, we've got some change coming up, or ready, Manny?
I do. It's gonna be changed to February 18th at the same time.
That work for everybody as well? Boyd, Jill?
Yeah. At 1:00, 10:30, 3:00 PM.
How would be in the emergency management following up for them? That's what we had discussed.
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to stay the same, okay.
Paul, Matt, no?
And planning mission meetings, they're the same as AUAAR on the 22nd. Any other meetings that we have to address? Any acknowledgements?
I'd like to acknowledge the Park and Rec Commission, particularly Sylvia, for helping with the skate day in January, and then the Montrose Days Committee for putting on the beans and eggs. What's it called?
Bean bag?
Bean bag?
Bean bag beer or something?
Yeah, the bees. And that's the place also in January.
Chili was good. It's only one alarm. I don't know who made the chili, but it was good.
I'd like to recognize Joanne Faust and the EVA for their service over the last year and look forward to another year. And I'd also, again, like to recognize the Yama Yellow Ribbon Group as well, for their service. And a shout out to Red's Cafe and the Waverly Cafe for supporting us. And to the Delano and Waverly Fire Departments for their mutual aid, as well as to all our firefighters in the Montrose Fire Department for their service and their commitment to the protection of life and property. I greatly appreciate you guys. Anything else? And then a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Stand and adjourn.